I'll now call to order the November meeting of the Oxford Planning Commission. Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. Please note that case numbers 2911, 2915, and 2916 have been postponed. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
You have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
And is Commissioner Mylum on?
Yes.
Commissioner Mylum?
Uh, yes.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, and I'll vote yes.
All right. I hope you've had a chance to review the minutes from both the September and October meetings. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the two sets of minutes?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor here. Commissioner Mylum, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. Ben, do we have a staff report this evening?
There's nothing to report.
Okay. So we'll move on. Just one case on the consent agenda for case number 2017, the Wesley Foundation Site Plan Approval. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor. Commissioner Mylum, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
All right. Consent agenda is approved. Our first public hearing will be case number 2904. Betty Jane Gary has filed a request for a variance from section 4861 sidewalks for property located at 703 Lincoln Avenue. And can we go ahead and hear both 2904 and 2905 together so we can discuss them together?
Sure.
All right. And 2905 is a request for preliminary and final plat approval for Gary subdivision for property located at 703 Lincoln Avenue.
Okay, great. So I'll go ahead and start with 2904. The... The applicant seeks a variance from section 4861 of the Land Development Code, which states that sidewalks or alternative walkways, when authorized, are required for new development in all zoning districts. The applicant has also filed a request for a multi-lot subdivision, case 2905, that we'll hear next. The applicant states that granting the proposed variance would not be detrimental to the neighborhood and that eliminating the sidewalk will reduce the amount of clearing and grading along Lincoln during development of the new lots. The Pathways Commission considered this item twice, both at their September 26th meeting, where they did not offer a recommendation requesting more information about significant trees on the site or alternate options. And they evaluated the project again at their October 24th meeting. The applicant's engineer was present on behalf of the applicant. No further information was provided at that meeting about existing trees or possible solutions to allow for the installation of a sidewalk while protecting the trees on-site. At that meeting, the Pathways Commission voted 5-0 to recommend denial of the variance to the Planning Commission. And those two letters were attached with your report. The engineering department has also evaluated this proposal and visited the site and are recommending denial of the requested variance. And it's the opinion of staff that the construction of the sidewalk does not constitute a hardship in this case. So staff is recommending denial of the requested variance. And then we'll move on to 2905. So I sent this out to all commissioners. It was updated on the city website, but the applicant sent an email on November 11th that had three additional exhibits. So those have been added to the case file. And the report was updated today to reflect those exhibits which were included with the report. So the applicant is requesting approval to subdivide an existing plus or minus 2.6 acre lot into five lots. The underlying zoning is traditional suburban residential, and the site is located in the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. The property features frontage on both Buchanan and Lincoln Avenues. There's one existing home on the site that fronts Buchanan, which is the home of the applicant and is a contributing structure in the South Lamar Historic District. The applicant seeks to create four lots at the rear of the property, all of which will front Lincoln Avenue. The proposed area to be divided into four lots measures around .71 acres. The remaining acreage that's not proposed to be subdivided into those four lots would remain with the existing house as the fifth lot in this subdivision. The proposed lots vary in size slightly from plus or minus .17 to .18 acres. Lots zone traditional suburban residential are required to measure at least 7,500 square feet, which is a requirement that's met exactly by the proposed subdivision. Each lot features approximately 71.5 feet of street frontage, while rear lot lines range from 68.48 to 72.27 feet. The applicant notes that storm water will be addressed at each site individually as the buildings are proposed and built at each individual lot. Major subdivisions of property are rare in Oxford's historic districts, as much of the historic core is built out and has been for some time. Subdivision should be considered carefully to ensure that the necessary growth and development of the city is careful and that the historic downtown core can handle infill projects. The Conservation Overlay District, as noted in section 2618 of the Land Development Code, encompasses Oxford's distinctive older neighborhoods and commercial areas, which contribute significantly to the overall character and identity of the community, and is meant to address the following goals that were listed out in the report: To protect and strengthen desirable and distinctive physical features, design characteristics, and the unique identity, charm, and flavor of Oxford's older neighborhoods; To protect and enhance the livability of the city, strengthening civic pride; To promote new compatible development and prevent blinding influences and reduce conflict caused by insensitive and incompatible development; To promote and retain affordable housing and to encourage development design that builds connectivity to adjacent developments in the surrounding community; Makes positive contribution to Oxford's evolving cityscape. Additionally, one of the factors in site plan review states that the following should be considered: General site arrangement, amenities, and convenience, with particular reference to ensuring that appearance and general layout of the proposed development will be compatible and harmonious with the properties in the general area, and will not be so at variance with other development in the areas to cause a substantial negative impact on such property values. So the proposed subdivision meets the TSR zoning requirements for lot size. However, the proposed lots are not of typical size or street frontage for Lincoln Avenue specifically. With a couple of exceptions, most of the neighboring lots on Lincoln have at least 100 feet of street frontage. So the commission should consider if the proposed smaller lots are appropriate in this context, and if the proposed subdivision is in keeping with the character and rhythm of the street. Staff is recommending that the applicant create a four-lot subdivision rather than the proposed five lots. So that would be one lot with the house on Buchanan and three lots in the proposed four-lot area. Three lots featuring around 95 feet of street frontage would be more in keeping with the street frontage of the existing lots on Lincoln. One additional item that has yet to be addressed by the applicant is the existing historic tree on the adjacent owner's lot located at 904 South 11th Street. The tree is shown on the map that I included with your report. It's number 10. According to section 98141 of the city's code, "No person utility or department shall prune, excavate below the drip line, remove, or otherwise disturb such trees without the approval of the tree board." So staff made that a condition of approval that any future development that could affect in that drip line would go before the tree board. Engineering provided comments that were included with your report regarding access, water and sewer, and storm water. I'm sure you'll have some questions for Rihanna on that. But the storm water management for this development is planned to be performed by each individual lot owner as lots are developed. So staff recommendations, staff is recommending denial of the requested preliminary and final subdivision plat as proposed, and instead recommends that the applicant create a four-lot subdivision, one lot with the house on Buchanan, and three lots fronting Lincoln. Should the commission wish to approve the requested plat, staff recommends the following seven conditions: Approval of the Gary subdivision is required by the mayor and board of aldermen. That stamped recorded copy of the covenants shall be provided to the planning department prior to permitting. That the 10-foot utility easements across frontage of all lots needs to be shown. That pedestrian easements for sidewalk access across frontage needs to be shown where applicable. Additional language is required on the plat regarding storm water ownership and responsibility prior to the case being heard by the board of aldermen. That approval of construction plans regarding general grading and drainage necessary to ensure that water is conveyed to the existing storm water infrastructure must be approved prior to the case being heard by the board of aldermen. And that any future site work will be reviewed and approved by the tree board to ensure that the historic white oak at 904 South 11th Street is not affected by any proposed development. So that's it. That was quite a bit of information. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have, and I believe the applicant will present.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening. Jeff Williams with Williams Engineering, representing the applicant. First, I'd like to make a correction concerning the sidewalk variance. The second trip to the Pathways Commission, I did bring to them the tree survey that was prepared. It showed them that out of the nine trees that are along the frontage, seven of those would be taken out by the sidewalk. I was informed that at the Pathways Commission, they had talked about possibly speaking with the city to reduce the verge distance, which is three feet for the city. Even if you bring it directly behind the curb with the field that had to be put in, you still take out these trees. I have a drawing, if you'd like to see the drawing of the trees with the sidewalk.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a copy of the tree survey?
Uh, should be in the pack.
It wasn't sent to us.
It was discussed at the pathways. I'm sorry if it didn't make them.
Yeah. Basically, here it is. This... These are a couple of white oaks. And if you keep on moving down the street, there are huge trees. I think Harry's got one of them listed for sale. There are huge trees all along this north side, some bigger than this one even. Sure, I'm sorry. I'm Brad Walsh. I'm representing the Betty Jane Gary, the applicant. There's the 18-inch water oak. And all of these are taken within feet, within a foot off the curb.
So one question I had for, I guess, both the sidewalk variance and the plat is whether you have a grading plan? Because we didn't have one in our...
We separate each house and designed their own. That was the reason for the request to do the detention with each house, because we don't know exactly which houses, what the size of the houses are going to look like. So it's common on these sized lots to let the grading plans come in as the houses are constructed.
That's a big pecan. Couple of elms, I believe.
So I think the grading plan's relevant here because there's only one outlet for the drainage that goes under the street, right?
So another reason for not putting a sidewalk there is because where that drainage structure is, is it drops down. So everything drains to that one site. So if we extend that sidewalk, we have to extend that pipe, which is going to burn.
Right.
Into it on those trees. The rest of the lot, there's not many trees, any trees of any significant size. So the tree survey shows all the trees that would meet the requirement to be surveyed by city regulations.
So you're telling me, without a grading plan, that the development is not going to impact those trees?
The trees on the frontage?
Mm-hmm.
That's correct. My plan is to utilize as much of that front yard as possible for my detention, because each one of those lots are not going to take a lot of detention. So we've done it on other subdivisions before, just create a depression in the front, let them spill out and go into the drainage.
So there's going to be a depression in the front?
It's naturally one there now.
Right. Well, I guess this is where I'm going, is it's hard to imagine exactly how this is going to work without a coordinated drainage plan. Right? And typically for a plat, I realize that for individual lots, you would do the grading plan one at a time. But in this case, it's a subdivision, and one of the preliminary plat requirements is a grading plan.
It was not discussed in the couple of meetings I had with planning, and I have not received any comments on that.
All right.
I'm not even so certain that a variance would be required. This isn't a through street. You're providing no connectivity whatsoever to anything. There's 1,000 feet of Lincoln Avenue, and you're creating sidewalk on possibly 270, I think, feet of it with no... You're not connecting to anything. You can't get... There's new construction right beside this, and then there's Dr. Diz's lot. You're just never going to get, you're never going to get connectivity to anything. And then further on up, where there is connectivity to Lamar, South Lamar, there's no, there are no sidewalks on either side of that street up past the Dead End. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure that this ordinance requires us to even have sidewalks.
I have a question that's really more for us and the city, I guess. Two questions. One is why the house that's being constructed right beside this right now, why were they not required to put in sidewalks if this would? Is that just because this is a new subdivision completely?
Correct.
Okay. Second is, and I think Rihanna's comments, there is a sidewalk on the other side, and it is in terrible... And I actually, I live in this neighborhood. I've looked at this a lot. This is a street that you let your little bitty kids ride their bikes down the middle of because there are no cars. And nobody walks on a sidewalk. You walk down the middle of this street. But there is a sidewalk on the other side. So, and it is in terrible shape and hardly shows in some places. So why doesn't the city fix that sidewalk? It's there. And I'm sure the neighborhood would love for that sidewalk to function.
Can you answer that? Rihanna?
Okay. Is that a Rihanna question?
Hi. This is Rihanna. I do think that's a Rihanna question. So regarding maintenance, we will go and, we've not received any complaints or calls about sidewalk issues there. And so this is the first I've heard about that. But we will go and look. Anytime that we've got sidewalk that requires maintenance, we try to go and get that maintenance taken care of so that that sidewalk is usable for the residents. There are two separate issues in that our ordinance does require new subdivisions to provide for sidewalk. And it is required without consideration of connectivity, with the reasoning behind that being that, for example, Old Taylor Road is one that you've heard frequently. When we first started requiring sidewalk out there, there was nobody else that had sidewalk. And now there is a long portion, you know, the majority of it has sidewalk, because as things have been redeveloped, that sidewalk has been constructed. There is an option of a variance for the Planning Commission to have the ability to look at it and see if y'all feel otherwise regarding if that sidewalk should be there or not. So there's the requirements in the ordinance that we are required to present and look at. And then, of course, there's the option for the variance. Our, as we were evaluating this, we just don't have the information. Because when you start looking at, there are going to be driveways, they're going to be installed, and where are those driveways going to go? And so, you know, we would hate to have, to present to the Planning Commission that, you know, there's no way for them to build this sidewalk. And then, you know, or we're going to save all these trees. And then, when you start coming into driveways, which we don't know where they're going to be right now, we don't know what the field's going to look like. And then you suddenly have to go in there and clear those trees anyway. I don't think that would be what anybody would want to happen. And so that's where we are kind of, we can't provide you any engineering opinions about what the trees could be saved or could not. Because right now, you know, we know that driveways are going to go in there. And we know that there's going to have to be, you know, field to get in, we believe, you know, to build on that site. And we haven't seen storm water yet. So we can't say that grunting variance saves any of the trees in actuality.
Hey, guys, this is Kirk. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I guess to kind of add to Judy's comments and thinking about what Rihanna said, you know, it's one thing for us to have these general rules regarding subdivisions. But, you know, I guess prior to all this, when, you know, the old historic part of Oxford was laid out, it was laid out with one sidewalk along, you know, on one street. You know, that, I mean, on one side of the street with no sidewalk on the other side of the street, which is kind of the same way as, you know, as my street and then several other streets. So I think there ought to be some consideration to not having a sidewalk on that side of the street, because there are just single-family residences on either side of it. So for that, for, to have a connection going all the way down to 11th or Lamar would require that the people on either side subdivide their single-family lots and build a subdivision.
And I talked to several, or talked to one other property owner about that, and then one up north said, you know, would you consider that? If we were to have, if there was a comprehensive plan to get sidewalks, and they just started laughing. I mean, they're not going to do that. Why would they, why would they lose their green space?
Additional comments or questions? So we're focused on...
Are we still just talking about the sidewalk here? Or are we talking about everything?
Well, we heard both cases, the staff report for both cases, but I think we're just centering on the sidewalks for now.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? I mean, I think it's a valid point that it's unlikely that anything further east is going to connect this. I don't agree that... I don't agree that that's, that doesn't make the code apply. I think it applies here and a variance is necessary, but the point is taken.
It's, my point is it's not a through street. And if you guys wanted to impose a sidewalk requirement, if there was ever any connectivity, even not, even just up to, up to South Lamar. I'd say we'll build that in, that whatever future, whatever future landowner has to give the city the ability to, you know, to build a sidewalk there. If it would be a sidewalk that led anyplace.
I have built a required sidewalk to nowhere, so it does happen. But I'm sticking with my, I don't understand why we would require people to build a nice new expensive sidewalk when there's one on the other side that is not usable. I think it, you know, it's kind of pointless.
Anybody, any other questions from the commission on the sidewalk variance? Anybody else from the audience wish to speak on twenty-nine oh four, the request for variance for the sidewalk? Anyone online? Alright. Is there a motion on the request for a variance from section four point eight point six point one sidewalks for the property located at seven oh three Lincoln?
Motion to approve the sidewalk, the variance for the sidewalk.
I have a motion to grant the variance, is there a second?
Say.
There is a second, all in favor of granting the variance. Commissioner Milam, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alright.
Yes.
The variance is approved. Alright, so we'll move seamlessly on to the subdivision itself. This one, I think, is more complex than the sidewalks, partly for the same reason, the grading issue. I guess I'm not convinced between the grading and the driveways that were mentioned that we're going to save all these trees. But if we save any of them, that's great. But there is the stormwater issue and the historic tree on the adjacent property. The way the subdivision is platted currently, I think about half of Lot Four is covered by the drip line of the historic tree.
Can you go back to that survey picture where the trees were?
Sure, I'll show you. You've got, so the historic tree is approximately seventeen feet off of the property line of this lot, Foes Lot Four. You're going to have five feet off of that before you can get to where you can even put a driveway. And we're going to put a semi-permeable pavers that, you know, that allow for the. So there, I don't anticipate very much if any, that's certainly not as much as the existing home that the tree is on. That any of these structures will be significantly under the drip line.
Well, I mean, I visited the site and pasted off based on the numbers that were here. And it looks like the existing branches of the historic tree cover about thirty to thirty-five feet of what.
I dispute that, I just don't.
That's fine.
I kind of, I took a laser, looked at it where the tree was, backed off. And it's, it's not, it's a huge canopy, don't get me wrong. But, I mean, there might be two branches that would, would kind of come over. And I mean, look, my mother-in-law Betty Jane Gary put a restriction on that particular tree. That it could never be cut down. And she did that thirty years before the tree board was even founded. We're not going to do anything to hurt that tree. So, but, but I think, to be honest with you, it's just not, the ordinance already covers this. The ordinance says you can't do anything to hurt the tree without the permission of the tree board. I would just, I would just like to get an assessment as to whether or not there would be anything that would do that. Once we got to the point where we had actual, where we had plans to build there.
Sure, my understanding.
Current plan is on Lot Four, is my sister-in-law Lindy is going to build on that. And the plan, the plan would be counting the sidewalk, you'd be about thirty feet off of that tree.
So, I guess this is a question for staff, who defines the drip line of the historic trees? Is it the tree board?
Yeah, I think it would depend on them and we would also probably work with Jeff on locating the exact, the exact location of distance. So that way you can provide that to the tree board and they can confirm.
Yeah, and my understanding of the ordinance is not just that you can't hurt the tree, but there's no disturbance within the drip line, not even putting in pavers.
Unless it's authorized by the tree board.
Unless it's authorized by the tree board, right. So I think we need that information before we can make much determination here for this Lot Four. I mean, if it's, for example, if my assessment's right and half of it's not buildable without permission from the tree board. I think we need to get some input from the tree board. In addition, so, I mean, we mentioned the stormwater issue. I don't see, well, maybe you can explain, how are we going to do stormwater lot by lot when there's only one drainage point that's in Lot Three?
So we had, I had this discussion at a meeting with the department heads. Rihanna and I just discussed it, their concern was blocking water off more than anything. My plan to have the individual drainage or detention, excuse me, for each lot wasn't the biggest concern, it was making sure that we didn't block it up. And Mr. Walsh said, well, Jeff's going to be the engineer, so each lot will have my coordination with whoever's building the house to make sure that whatever their requirements are for the house, I take care of the drainage. Each one will be taken care of considering the next to make sure that there's depression left between the houses, not to block any water coming from the north, which is not as much as you'd think it is, and leave that path to that drainage structure.
So all the drainage is going to be done on the surface?
Yes.
And so, how, how's that going to work? I mean, what's your plan for the grading on this? Because it's, it's a bowl right now.
Right, so.
So you're going to build up portions of it?
Building pads, like I said, the building pads, I have no idea. If I went in there and did a site design for it, I would have to fill the whole site in because I have no idea what the, not the whole site, each one of the building areas. I'd have to fill those in to take care of that. I don't have any clue as to what size the houses are going to be, where they're going to be located, how they're going to be arranged to miss whatever trees they can miss. If there are any inside those lots. So create depressions to keep the water coming toward the front. I'll capture it in front of each lot in small depressions, we've done it before, and let it spill over and eventually go into the structure that goes on the street.
Well, I mean, we've got buildable areas marked out there, right?
That's what I'm saying, I don't want to put, I don't want to put field in that entire buildable area if they're not going to use it.
Any other questions?
We had offered to put any sort of deed restriction to keep Jeff or one engineer in charge of it, you know, that the city wanted to come up with. It's just, it's premature for us to know what anybody's going to want to build on this.
Yeah, so Ben, if we were to approve the plat and, you know, with some sort of restriction that Mr. Williams has to be the engineer. Is there any sort of site plan approval that comes before the city on these individual lots?
Not on an individual lot like this, there wouldn't be a site plan that would come before the site plan review committee. But, I mean, it could be subject to review and approval by the city engineer, you know, to make sure that it's compliant with, you know, the stormwater requirements. Also, and then I think the planning staff related to, you know, from the grading standpoint, from the drainage.
Okay.
For the, for the drip line, not the drainage.
With four lots, the way you have them, it looks like to me, the way you have the trees outlined there, especially the lots on the, the two lots on the right. There's no way you're going to not lose some trees there.
Actually plotted some sixteen-foot drives on all four lots and out of the nine trees, two were subject to be in danger.
Okay.
Out of those nine.
The, can you identify those two?
I think it's the ones at the corner.
Because I can't, I can't tell.
I was trying to, sorry. I think it's the one between, this one, yes. One of those two would be hard to get in between.
Is that, is that at the lot line there pretty much where the back of that post is, forward?
No, that's a gate, Harry, that's a gate that's.
Right there, okay.
Which other one did you have?
That's one of those and one of the ones in the next lot because we've got to miss the drainage structure.
This one right here, I think that was right on top of the drainage.
And I guess my other question is, is if I read that right, that survey was from two thousand and seven?
Not those trees.
Well, the one that I was saying.
No, this is a different.
It's been updated. We did the original survey in two thousand and seven. We've been working on it since then and we've coven for a while. Now we've been working on it for another eighteen months or better, trying to come up with a plan that clients were happy with. And we updated the survey and went out and shot the trees back in.
I guess my question is, is from two thousand and seven to now, how the, how the character of the neighborhood has changed? And how do you think dropping four lots in there, that size, will affect the neighborhood itself? And I know that there, there's some lots in there, that there are two up there on the corner of Lincoln and Eleventh that are seventy-ish or less up there on the corner. So, I mean, I know that there's houses in there, there's one across the street. But I'm just wondering with new construction that's being in there, new construction on Eleventh, remodeling of those houses. How those four lots like that really affect the character of the neighborhood? Rather than maybe doing three, like Ben said, and trying to save some of those trees on the front side where the driveway is?
I can't see how, I'm a big proponent of not just affordable housing. And let's face it, nothing in this neighborhood is going to be truly affordable in the sense of it's not going to be cheap. But we're not going to build mansions on it, we don't want to build mansions on anything either. And if this enables us to build more, a more cottage-type feel than I think this neighborhood originally was. I mean, if you, if you go out there tonight as you leave and look at the original map, it was full of fifty-foot lots, you know, within a block from here. This, there's been a lot of consolidation of lots as people, as the downtown area got more desirable. I think historically, what we should, what we should look for is getting lots that we can get more people within walking distance of, you know, where they spend their money.
I went and looked, I wasn't worried about the, I mean, you meet code by the, you know, the frontage. So I, you know, if you meet it, you meet it. So that's, I wasn't worried about that. So I was looking at lot size and I just actually took, you know, screenshots of my phone on three that are within, one of them was like.
The blue area is.
Two hundred and fifteen feet, there's a lot that would, is smaller than these would be. We have, that neighborhood is a mix of big lots and very small lots. And I don't, you know, that's, that's the way it is. And so, you know, we have lots that are smaller than that in the neighborhood right now.
Other comments or questions? Anybody?
If we have approved the four lot thing.
Well, hang on, let's, let's be clear, it's a, there's a four lot and a five lot, but along Lincoln.
Yeah, okay, it's four new lots and then a five lot. Would they still have to come back before somebody and with their site plans for each individual that year?
Well, I think what I understood from Ben is we could put a stipulation on there that they, they have to get city, get engineering and city staff to sign off on whatever the design is.
Once again, I want to be clear, this fifth lot that is the Buchanan, we are not presently seeking any approval on that lot. We want that to be a separate phase. Simply because the, right now, the state of the law is that if we were to, if we were to come back to you, and I mean twenty years, thirty years in the future, and want to develop some of that, and I think some of that is, is things from Ms. Burrow's house on, on around start to, start to fill in on that back. There's a ton of land back there. Yeah, it's a hollow, but I don't want to cut my kids or grandkids off from, or the extended family off from, from being able to come back and get something going on Buchanan.
I think we can get clarification from staff on this, but my understanding is we're subdividing this parcel. And so it's, it has to be subdivided into lots that cover the whole parcel.
Then we're asking you to consider the Buchanan to be a separate phase.
Okay, I mean, typically phasing is for much larger developments. I mean, the language and the code around phasing is, is meant to allow putting in infrastructure for utilities and that sort of thing in later phases when it comes up. Not for splitting up small parcels in otherwise built-up areas. Yes, please, if you would come up and state your name, please, just for the record. If you would, just because there are people online, thank you.
I'm Martha Witherspoon, we live on Lincoln Avenue. My concern is if you're going to allow this small section to be divided into four small lots. Does that mean that in the future, they can take all that property on Buchanan and have ten lots over there of the same width lots?
It means they could go, well, it depends on which version you're asking about. So under what Mr. Walsh is proposing, they would go through the same process that they're doing right now for the portion on Buchanan. Under the city's version that's proposed, they would have to get consent from the neighbors in order to subdivide the Buchanan lot.
Okay, so the recommendation by the planning department staff that recommends three lots and include that big lot, then would allow protection for the neighborhood to come, have input to that?
Yeah, it would be four lots, the one on Buchanan being one large lot as part of the subdivision, that's correct.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we did it in phases, you'd still have that, you'd still have input, you just wouldn't have veto power. Which is how the law currently looks as if it reads. And that's what, that's what we're trying to avoid. We want, we want flexibility to not have to come in here and just say, okay, well, let's just go ahead and ask for ten now and fight the fight. That's likely never going to happen. But I don't, again, I don't want to cut off much as you wouldn't want to cut off and put restrictions on your families if, if the roles were reversed.
Yes, sir.
Based on what we have here, I'm not convinced that if you call it a phased development versus a lot, or however the applicant wants to characterize it, that we can know what the state of affairs is going to be ten, twenty, thirty years, or what the law is going to be. I mean, and so, I, you know, if that's what y'all choose to do and you call it phased development and the applicant is comfortable with that and wants to move forward with that, that's fine. But I think that whenever in the future, that new, next phase or that next part of the development comes in, whoever's sitting over at this table is going to have to look at it, given the State of the Land Development Code, the state of state law, and make a decision about what approvals will or won't have to be had. So I'm not, I'm not telling y'all, y'all have to do it one way or another. I just want it to be clear for the record that I don't think there's a guarantee of how a future development application is going to be processed.
Sure, well, while we have you, if it was today, if it was, if it had been approved as a phased development and the question today was how a proposal to subdivide the Buchanan lot would proceed, what's your interpretation of how the process would go?
Well, in a vacuum, it's a little difficult because we don't know what Phase Two looks like and how the applicant wants to set it up. And I think there's at least some room for interpretation or difference based on what that plan looks like. But the truth is, I don't fully, I cannot give you. But the truth is, I, I don't fully, I cannot give you a firm answer to that question, okay? Because i- if, if they came in tomorrow, y'all approved Phase One tonight, they come in with Phase Two tomorrow, and Brad's folks fill out a, um, application for preliminary and final plat for Phase Two, and here's however many lots are going to go into that. The constraint that we operate under is not one, that's a, a question of final interpretation for the planning staff or me or y'all. What Brad just talked about as far as veto power is how the state law operates. And so I, I think even if the applicant came in and said, "Y'all approved this as Phase Two. I'm moving forward", could somebody else in the neighborhood, somebody else, um, who says they're interested, challenge that and say, "No, Planning Commission and Board of Alderman, this is not the procedure you're going to follow. You have to do it a different way"? They, they could, and then we would be in a position where staff and ultimately y'all and the Board of Aldermen would have to make findings about whether or not it's an amendment of a subdivision plat. And again, without knowing what Phase Two or, or whatever it is looks like, it's difficult to say how that determination is going to be made. It's just an odd word. You know, we, we don't have zoning mechanisms like this, and it's a unique thing, and it gets the courts tripped up all the time.
Well, at the risk of the point evaporating when I tried to clarify it, what I understand you to say is that if we, if the city recommendation is accepted, it's definitely a subdivision, and subdividing the Buchanan lot would be subject to the modifications to a subdivision that's in the, the code with the veto power as it's characterized. But if it's a phased development, we don't know, is what I, I hear you saying.
I would be a little less absolute about that first point in the absence of any additional information about what comes in Phase Two. But generally speaking, yes.
Well, the first version, yeah, okay. Good enough. Thank you. Yes, sir, please.
Tommy Ross, nine one two, Lincoln Avenue. My concern is about the size of the lots, the four lots. Lot four, of course, is directly in front of our home. I think, um, the applicant is, is referring to lot sizes in the neighborhood in a rather generalized fashion. And to my knowledge, there is, there, there has been a lot of consolidation over the years on Lincoln Avenue. But to my knowledge, there is not one lot that faces onto Lincoln Avenue on either side that is anywhere close to as small as seventy-five hundred square feet.
Yes, sir. And I think, um, the staff report makes basically the same point, that within the confines of Lincoln Avenue, the three-lot proposal along Lincoln is more in keeping with that portion of the neighborhood. Is that right, Kate?
The only side lots anywhere close to that are on Eleventh Street.
But that, but that's not what the, if, if the Board of Aldermen, when they enacted the ordinance, wanted it to be a street-by-street ordinance, they could have said that. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't have this argument at all. But that's not what they said. They said in the general, uh, area or general neighborhood. And, uh, you know, with all due respect to Tommy, I think if you, if you went out in front of his house, I think it's, it's been one of those that was consolidated, uh, over the years. And I, I don't know how far back that was, but there's definitely been some consolidation, uh, in, in this neighborhood. And it, it just, um, uh, at, at what point do you cut it off?
Well, I think, I mean, another way of saying what you just said is that the trend has been towards larger lots, not smaller.
And the consideration should be for the, the, the character of the streets. It's not a street-by-street thing, but if you, if you don't have any lots that any, are anywhere close to that small in size on Lincoln Avenue, then you're changing the character of, of Lincoln Avenue.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, please, come forward.
I'm Ford. Uh, my house is on corner Lincoln South Eleventh. And I want to preface this by saying that Betty Jane Gary been the best neighbor. We call that field Gary Field because all of our boys, growing up playing, you know, baseball and football there, and she's been wonderful. Had a good relationship with them. And honestly, if anybody built behind me, I'd want it to be her daughter, since I know how they care about the land. But my two concerns, living in that house, I don't think, I've got some videos. I don't, I don't want to get out because, you know, the, the water is a huge issue. And it's not, Brad, it's not your fault or Jess's fault. In Oxford, we have some infrastructure issues. When there's a hard rain, and nobody sees it but me, and I can show y'all some video, I have a river running through my backyard and coming off Betty Jane's yard because that gutter fills up. I mean, our, that Lincoln or South Eleventh Street is a, literally has water that deep in it. And I can just tell you, I'm not an engineer, and I used to not worry about water issues, but I had a water issue at my house, and I had, I fixed it at great expense. And I can just tell you, Jeff, I'm not, Jeff's my friend. I'm not an engineer, but you can't solve that problem. You've got to have a coordinated plan if you have four lots there. And I, I don't know, my concern with four lots is, how do you, how do you take care of that drainage issue without hurting that tree? I mean, I, we went to great, you know, care when we redid my house to protect that tree. And I'm, and I'm a good, that tree, the drip line, that tree's pretty close to that fence. And I don't know how you mitigate all the water coming through there with a fourth lot without hurting that tree. And once again, I'm not an engineer, but, and I can show y'all some videos later. I've got, I don't want it to get out. But I, I mean, it literally is not just a, it doesn't happen a lot. When it rains hard and quickly, it's a river. And I've, you know, I've got standing water back there, and it is a huge problem. And if something, if that, those lots got built up, and that's where everything goes, right in that, right behind my house. And if that were to be built up and elevated, I just, I don't know how you could not cause problems for me or, or that, you know, that, that tree with, with four lots. You know, I, I think the, the three-lot thing sounds a lot better to me than four. You know, I think that's a, a good, you know, behind me. I, I, I think there needs to be a buffer zone in there somewhere and some way to handle that water. And as I said, I'm not an engineer, and, you know, and I, I don't know how to do that. But I'm afraid if it gets approved and goes forward, that, I, I don't think it could be solved by each house having their own issue. I mean, and once again, I'm, I'm the foreman. Jeff, he's an engineer. I'm not. But, and I can show, you know, I can show you later the video. It's not, it is a serious water problem when it rains hard.
Yes, sir.
That's all. And I, but I do want to say, I just, and I mentioned, I mentioned talking before him, but I've been, I've been busy, you're busy. And I, I don't want to drop anything. But I do hope that, I, I would love to have them behind, behind me. And I mean that. I just don't know that the four-lot thing for me is a problem.
Thank you, sir. I have a question for staff. Rihanna, um, do we have other examples of where we've handled stormwater on a lot-by-lot basis when a new subdivision has come in?
Um, we have not, not that I can immediately think of where it's been lot by lot, because we have previously not had a need to track it. Um, and by track it, I mean, engineering has not, we, we've not had a way to prevent the sale of a water and sewer tap and prevent the issue of a construction permit until that stormwater was addressed. And so we've not allowed it before. We do have a new software program now where we believe we can place a hold on the property until the stormwater is resolved. Um.
Okay, so we have a, we have a computer tracking system now that would ensure that the building permit wouldn't be issued before something had been done about the stormwater. Is that right?
Uh, that is, that is what we have been told. Uh, uh, that's what my understanding of this software, we've not tried that yet. We're, we're still relatively new into using our software.
Okay.
But my understanding is that we can place holds on property for various reasons and, and stop a permit from being issued.
Okay, so we, we have a way to track it and make sure that the building permit is tied to stormwater on a lot-by-lot basis. But we don't have any experience on how that would be coordinated between the lots to ensure that the whole system works. Is that right?
No, not on an individual basis. And that's why, as Jeff mentioned in that meeting, we discussed that there has to be some means to, to tie that down. Otherwise, there's just too great of a risk of, you know, for, quite honestly, other than the stormwater, but of them getting builders to come in there and do their plans and not really thinking about the, the, um, drainage. We need a, we need the entire area to be looked at, um, as a whole. And then also the individual stormwater plans to be developed. And that's the part that, um, in our meeting, we discussed has to be memorialized and, and done in some way. And we've not done that yet, but, um, I think one of our conditions is that those things have to be figured out before it could go to Board of Aldermen. Because I haven't seen anything yet that would ensure us that there is one engineer, um, that's going to be looking at it and solving it.
And Mr. Williams pointed out that these aren't very big lots, so they, they won't generate a lot of stormwater. But what proportion of the, the whole lot, including the portion on Buchanan drains through these on Lincoln? Do you know?
I don't know. Um, I, I would start with Jeff on that. I would say probably, um, if you're including the large, the large, um, main lot, the, the lot that has the existing home on it, probably at least half, but that, um, deed has delineated the drainage area. I don't remember the percentage.
I don't have the acreage, but, uh, if you look to the, um, to the west of Ms. Gary's current home, the general flow of water is back to the west. Some of it directed behind our house comes to those lots. If you go to the open area that they refer to as ball fields, the front, the east third of that lot kind of drains toward Eleventh. And then the rest of it comes back through, uh.
Okay. So the bulk of what's north of, of the Lincoln lots?
Just north, yes.
Yeah. All right.
I have, sorry, I have a question for Jeff and Rihanna, I guess. Um, so has any thought been given to, because I too live at the bottom of Hill, or I live at the bottom of Hill, and I care a lot about water. Um, so have, have y'all talked about maybe doing something besides just a surface, doing lot by lot? Like, looking at the whole thing and doing it before anything's developed?
Well, I was tasked with making sure.
Pipes or whatever?
Uh, have not considered any pipes. Um, at the meeting that Rihanna referred to, we had talked about making sure we didn't block the water. That was the main thing. And I think if I don't block the water, which I can assure that that won't happen, um, I can get it to a spot to where I can retain each lot and then drop it off into the structure.
Would anyone else from the audience wish to speak?
I, I will say that that could possibly change for sure, if I get the wrong size. Houses or anything could change, but that's the general consensus right now.
Yes, sir.
And, and I don't know if you've gotten this far or not. Hey, are, are you going to sell the lots? Or are you going to sell the lots and build a house?
Uh, two of the houses are going to remain with, um, my sister-in-law's. Um, there's a possibility the third one will as well. We, we're, we're not likely to haul off and develop all of these. Um, we, we're, I, we're going to develop it in terms of what we're talking about here today. But I don't think anybody's going to, we're not going to put the neighbors through having to build, build on top of building, you know?
The reason I ask the question is, is if you know that you're going to sell them and you know that you're going to build there, you should know kind of what you're going to build.
Yeah, I, I think, I think you're looking at twenty-two-hundred square foot with a detached garage and, and a driveway so to alleviate some of the off-street, um, part.
With like a front-load garage?
Hmm.
Front-load garage?
Yeah, I think, I think that's right, isn't it, Lindy? A front-load garage.
Because, because if that's the case and you do do four,
Yeah.
you, you'll definitely have to take some of those trees out. And if you do do that, you're going to have to build those lots up, which is going to create a problem with Ford's place. And so, my question is, is if you know what you're going to build there, should we not step back and take a look at what we're going to build there to make sure that we don't, uh, wreck the people down the street?
Yeah. Um, I mean, it sounds like he's, he's currently got a problem, uh, with, without us having done anything and without, you know, and I don't know how long that problem exists, but that's, that's not of, it's not currently our making. And I would think we could, I, I mean, I don't know. It's one of those, give me a lever, a lot, long enough, and I'll move the world. I, I'm confident my engineer can make sure that the, that the, uh, that the drainage issue, the drainage issues are solved to the extent that we can solve them.
That, Harry, I was kind of wondering the same thing. Like, I, I have seen Ford's backyard in a hard rain, and it is, he's, I mean, I've, he's telling the truth, obviously. But it's already doing that. So what is, what's the requirement for the person next door if they're not going to make it any worse? You know, I don't know. I don't, you know.
Well, I think there.
What do we do about that?
There is potential to make it worse, right? I mean, there's going to be more impervious area because there's going to be the footprint of the houses. Um, and we don't know how it's going to be routed. So I'm not saying that it will make it worse. I think it's just the lack of information about exactly how the drainage is going to work and how it's going to be routed. Because it already, I think, effectively serves as a bit of a detention basin right now when it rains hard. I mean, otherwise, there wouldn't be water pooling in, uh, on the die property. So where is that water going to go? And so, you know, it's just a lack of information.
That indicates a undersized pipe under the street. I, you know, I can't do a whole lot about that except detain what I can to take the pressure off of that drainage structure so it don't back up.
You know, comments or questions? Yeah, go ahead. Yes, sir. Yeah, the only drainage. Yeah. Understood.
Quick, quick question. Maybe this is maybe for Ben or the planning department. Why are we doing the preliminary and the final at the same time?
Uh, that's kind of common, especially here where, um, in this instance, they're just divvying up into lots. Uh, you know, so it's an ownership thing. They don't plan to build anything immediate or have any grading at this particular time that would come forward later. So it's not an uncommon thing to have a preliminary and a final plat hurt at the same time. So, so really, a preliminary plat, when it comes through, it gives you the ability to go in and do infrastructure work, initial grading, uh, things like that to set the stage for the final plat. But since they're not doing that at this time, they're effectively requesting a final plat approval.
So the preliminary plat is mainly a vehicle to get started.
You're just driving a solution to all of these problems. So that's actually my point. Like, why aren't we, why don't we just do the preliminary plat? I mean, why aren't we not doing that and then letting them figure out their drainage and figure everything out, and then come back and then do a final plat? After we got all the answers to our questions.
So we know there's potential that one lot would be transacted on, correct? Uh, there's the potential for one, possibly two. And by having the lots, uh, and the, uh, and the deeds that reflect those lots, the final plat would give them the beal, the ability to transact on those properties.
But if, if we did one and you came back with more answers, I mean, like a month, is that going to, you know, like, if maybe some better water?
Well, I think it's like Ben said, if, if we do the preliminary, we could start work. If we get approval on the preliminary. So the final is just a, a mechanism for placing transfer ownership.
Yeah, I guess I don't really understand what you're going to start working on with the preliminary because we don't have a grading plan or stormwater plan or any of that.
I, I haven't got any comments on what to do about that. If, if that's what it takes us, that's what we'll do. Again, it's hard to do without knowing exactly what the house is going to look like. They, uh, it's going to be very particular into how I design the, the detention. It's the size of the houses, where they're going to be located.
Well, and I know this is a very, very small subdivision, the way it's, you know, but in other subdivisions, they do all the, they do all of that and then sell the lots, you know? It's done. That's, that, each individual homeowner doesn't have to worry about where their water's going because it's already been done.
Typically, in, in a, in a different area, you would, you would do that. You would have a lot of infrastructure be put in. So you'd want to get all that done. So if you had some revisions to make to the lots because something wasn't working, uh, with, with the plan here, I just, I requested the, the preliminary and final because it just skips a step. It really doesn't skip the procedure as far as when the work can commence. If I got preliminary, I'd start putting in water and sewer and moving dirt and, uh.
Well, to, to that point, I guess, help me understand. So on the one hand, what I'm hearing is we can't, you don't have a grading plan for us because you don't know what the houses are going to look like. But on the other hand, you want us to approve the plat so that you can get started moving dirt? So if you need the houses to have the design, why don't we just wait until there are houses? and we know what the design needs to be and then we can approve the plat along with the grading and the infrastructure?
We can't sell anything. Or we can't, we can't give, we can't make the gift to, Ms. Gary can't make the gift to her daughters. We can't sell any, we can't sell one lot. We anticipate having to sell funds on all of it. We can't do any of that without knowing are we gonna have four or three?
I understand that. I wouldn't think we would wait until we saw what the houses were gonna look like, especially if you're gonna sell something, some, you know, somebody's gonna build, you don't know. But to get in, like around the corner, like on, oh shoot, I don't know my streets, behind, behind the Hoarth property across from Cedar Bend, yes, Cedar Bend. You know, all of that, they did a whole bunch of stuff before they sold those lots. So then when the people bought those lots, they just came in and built their houses. They, they got all of that. It looked like to me. I may be wrong. They, they did a bunch of stuff to make sure that the water was going the right places, you know, all that. So that's, that's what I'm asking, is could that be brought to us and say, this is, this is what we're gonna do and then these lots will be ready to build on? They're buildable when we sell them or gift them or whatever we're gonna do.
Well, one of the fundamental questions that you just raised is will there be three lots or four on Lincoln? And I guess, I don't feel like I have the information to, to make a determination on that. I mean, we don't have any clarity on the impact of the historic tree and where the drip line is and what the implications would be because the tree board hasn't ruled on that. And we don't have any information on the grading and how the stormwater's gonna be coordinated coming off of those sites. I mean, even the difference between three and four lots makes a difference in how complicated coordination is and how much room you have on site to put stormwater in. Any other comments from the commission? Any online? Alright, anyone from the audience? Hearing no further comments. Is there a motion on case number 2905 for the request for preliminary and final plat? Hearing no motion, I'll make a motion to table it pending more information on the historic tree and a grading plan with a plan for how the stormwater will be coordinated among the lots. Is there a second? There is a second. All in favor of tabling until next month? Mr. Mylum, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, alright. Thank you, sir. We'll see y'all next month. Grading plan and a plan for how to coordinate the stormwater and something from the tree board about the drip line and whether they'll be able to develop under the tree.
Hey, Ben? One more, one more thing on that. Will you ask engineering what the, what the capacity is at the street? So when we, whenever, if he does get the water to the street like he's talking about, can that, can the pipe handle it or not? That's a pretty big deal.
Alright. Our next case, we'll give him just a minute. Our next case will be case number 2906. John Albritton has filed a request for a special exception as provided in section 3.5.8 residential common interest developments for property located at 1418 Adams and 433 North 15th Street.
Okay, the applicant requests approval for a special exception to create a residential common interest development. The existing property located at Adams Avenue and North 15th Street, the existing L-shaped lot has a house.
Kate, sorry, one second. Commissioner Mylum is recusing himself for this case, is that right?
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Sorry.
No, that's no big deal. The existing L-shaped lot has a house that fronts Adams Avenue, 1418 Adams, and a house that fronts North 15th Street, 433 North 15th Street, with another dwelling unit in the rear yard. There are no plans to add additional units at this time, though an addition to the house at 1418 Adams was discussed on a complimentary basis by the preservation commission at their October meeting. The current lot is overbuilt according to the current land development code as the lot size does not allow for two primary dwelling units on a lot of this size. If one of these primary residences were to be removed from the site, another could not be built that would meet the current land development code. Per section 3.513 of the code, two parking spaces per dwelling unit are required for homes on individual lots in suburban residential zones. If either house undergoes renovation, the parking should be brought into compliance with this requirement. Staff has received a draft RCID covenant detailing the boundaries of each unit and the proposed common elements. Staff recommends approval of the requested special exception to making the finding that the creation of a RCID in this location will not adversely harm the public interest with the following conditions. Approval is for the plan as submitted. That if either primary building is demolished, new dwelling cannot be rebuilt in its place. That adequate parking will be incorporated into any renovation plans at 1418 Adams Avenue or at, sorry, that was a typo, it was not, at 433 North 15th Street. And that a stamped recorded copy of the covenant should be provided to the planning department prior to permitting.
Thank you. So RCID applies to the structures. If one of the structures is demolished, there is no RCID anymore?
Right.
And then, so they couldn't just rebuild another structure under the same RCID? Okay.
Because it would be, right now it's an existing nonconformity. So that'd be essentially building a nonconformity.
Okay, questions? With the applicant, or anyone from the, is the applicant present? I don't have a question, but if you'd like to speak. Okay. Anybody from the audience wish to speak? Mr. McDavid?
Steve McDavid, and own property on both sides of this application, wraps around a house that I own with Joel Little. And so just have a couple of questions. I think in looking at the code and talking with Ben, as I understand it, granting this would not change their requirements to build within the zoning of the neighborhood, the single-family residential that it is right now. And even if that's true, if one of the houses is destroyed or removed, that whatever they built back would apply just the same. And I just want confirmation that that's correct.
Yes, Steve, that's correct. It's, the underlying zoning is traditional suburban residential. But this property is also located in the neighborhood conservation overlay district. And so, you know, setbacks are based off of the conservation overlay district. Lot coverage is based off of that. But in the instance where it's not clear, we would default back to the underlying zoning. So if the conservation overlay district doesn't, you know, address something that the traditional suburban residential district does, we would default back to that.
Well, and this statement was made, at this time, the number of units is remaining the same. I just want to make sure that we're, we're not doing something that would allow four units to be where they're now, it's two if there was a fire and knocked them out or something else. So this would always remain two units or one, as I understand it, if one was destroyed. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, and I think the applicant's engineer could verify that also.
Okay, so just, alright. One last question is, I know some of the size requirements for what can be built are based on the size of the lot. Okay, I think it's either 50% or 60%, whether you're on the overlay or the, whatever we call it, traditional. So will, if a house is destroyed or able to be torn down and they choose, they ask to be rebuilt, will they be using the entire L-shaped lot to calculate their 50%, 60%? So will there be two houses with 50% to 60% sitting there?
I mean, so.
I'm happy to address that.
Please.
Yeah, so we would look at the entire L-shaped property and in determining the lot coverage requirements. And I think, Kate, did you, did you say in your report that currently they exceed the lot coverage requirements? They currently exceed the lot coverage requirements. So, you know, if they were to propose any expansions, additions, things of that nature, they would have to take that into consideration on the 50%?
I guess my question is this. They exceed the coverage, which I think is 50%, is that right?
Correct.
Under the overlay? And is that by y'all combining the square footage of all three?
It's all structures on the property.
All structures, all impervious coverage on that whole L-shaped property?
And just so clear, so if one of them is destroyed or demolished, it's not gonna come back and ask for its own 50%?
If one of them is destroyed, my understanding is they don't have the lot size to construct anything except maybe a shed, I don't know. They don't have, they couldn't build another dwelling unit.
And Steve, it's also in the historic district, so you know.
Lot of protection, yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay, I don't think I have any more questions.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question based on Steve's because of this property on the, which street is that? On the North 15th, house has a little, it says one-story wood behind it. And I know at some point someone discussed like making that a little mother-in-law suite or something. So in that, so that would be three.
Yes, someone lives there now.
And that tiny little back thing?
It was, it was decided, it was discussed as to whether or not that would be a third unit in this development. And it shows not to.
Somebody lives in it.
Somebody's currently there now, yes.
So what happens? So there are three. That's three. Somebody's living in it.
It's an existing nonconformity.
Okay, okay. But if it went away, it's, it's not coming back either. Okay.
But it can't stay there.
But it can't stay there?
Yes.
Because it's there. Okay. I got it.
Okay.
Sorry. Did you say that the square footage is already at the maximum so they couldn't hear the extra space?
That's right. The lot coverage.
Someone can look at you.
They came for complimentary review for an addition. And I'm not sure how the lot coverage would work out with that. I think we haven't gotten that far in the planning yet on how much is the lot coverage and if some of what's existing pave will be removed, plus the addition or anything like that.
So the, the footprint of the structures counts towards the coverage and then any impervious surface? So if they got rid of some impervious surface theoretically, they could do an addition up to the lot coverage standard, is that right?
That's right.
Just, just confirm, but they're at maximum right now, so they'd have to take something down to put something up, except going up in the air. Is that right?
Yeah, I believe based on our analysis of it, it was, it was over 50%, which is the maximum as it is right now.
Okay.
I mean, I assume you could ask for variance for, I mean, I've been in both these houses and I would love for them to be saved, the smaller one. I'm just guessing that somebody's not gonna wanna save it because there's nowhere to put a second bathroom in it? So just in my, just my opinion, which has nothing to do with what I would vote, is that I would rather, you know, let somebody put a little bathroom on that than have somebody wanna tear it down because nobody wants a one-bedroom house anymore, you know, so. I'm just saying somewhere out there, there could be a variance that, you know, affects something if somebody wanted to ask for it.
And have to meet all the requirements in order to be granted a variance. I mean, look, we've had multiple conversations with the, with the applicant about this particular site. And it is a unique site with existing buildings. You know, they talked about, originally the discussion was a subdivision of the piece of property on Adams. And in order to do that, you would have to grant a myriad of variances. It doesn't meet the lot width requirement. It doesn't meet the lot size requirement. I believe that the existing house is set, is built into the side yard setback. I think there's a potential for one of the rear structures to be in violation of that setback line. So, you know, there are myriad of variances that would have to be, you know, granted. And as part of our discussions, the question was, could they proceed with a residential common interest development for what's there? And we saw no reason why they couldn't proceed. And it's for, as I think it was framed by the chairman, it's framed for the structures that are there. And if, as Kate has it conditioned, a structure is removed, then, you know, absent of any variances that would have to come back before this commission to be able to rebuild something, what is there now is what is going to remain in the absence of any other requests.
Any other questions? Comments from the commission?
I just wanted that in the record. The reason they were asking for this type of exception rather than separating it because it makes sense to separate it.
Yeah, and it's a special exception for several reasons. It's a special exception, an RCID requires a special exception when it's located in the conservation overlay district. It also requires a special exception if it's located in a historic district. So that's why this is coming before you as a special exception. We've had other RCIDs that are approved by special use administratively. But this one's, it's peculiar because of its location and its context, which is why we have it.
Would anyone online wish to speak on this case? Alright. Is there a motion on case number 2906? Request for a special exception as provided in section 3.5.8 residential common interest developments for the property at 1418 Adams?
I'd move that we grant a special exception.
I've got a motion to approve the special exception. Subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor? Commissioner Mylum is recused, so it is granted. How do we get Commissioner Mylum back in the room when he's online?
Commissioner Mylum, could you please re-enter the meeting?
Yeah, I'm back.
Nicely done. Our next public hearing is for case number 2907. John Albritton has filed a request for final plat amendment for the Grove at Grand Oaks Phase 5 Lots 75 and 76 for property located at 1,008 Morris Drive.
Okay, so the property is located on Morris Drive and the Grand Oaks pod and is two lots, number 75 and 76 in Phase 5 of the Grove at Grand Oaks subdivision. The applicant is requesting to amend the plat to transfer about a tenth of an acre of Lot 76 to Lot 75. The resulting properties will meet the minimums of lot size requirements for the underlying zoning and setbacks will be governed by the standards set forth in the pod. Got the letters of approval from the adjoining property owners in subdivision that the applicant has deemed adversely affected or directly interested. Staff recommends approval of the final plat amendment for Grove at Grand Oaks, Phase 5 Lots 75 and 76 with the two conditions that are listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Mylum, any questions?
Nope.
Anyone from the audience have any questions? Alright. Is there a motion on the request for final plat amendment for the Grove at Grand Oaks Phase 5?
Motion to approve final plat amendment with the two conditions.
I have a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor? Commissioner Mylum, how do you vote?
Yes.
Alright. The final plat, well, I guess we just make a recommendation for the final plat. So it'll go to the Board of Alderman. Our next case is case number 2908. Stillwater Oxford LLC has filed a request for special exception as provided in section 3.5.1.2.2. Dwellings detached, four bedrooms for property located on Oxford Way and Stillwater Lane.
Would also like to hear the site plan at the same time.
Okay. So we'll hear, we'll hear 2908 and 2909 for the site plan.
Go ahead. Yes, so the subject property is located on Oxford Way and north of the Farmview intersection. Applicant is requesting to modify the previously approved site plan for the cottages at Oxford Farms, now named Stillwater, to change 23 detached three-bedroom units into 20 detached four-bedroom and three detached five-bedroom units. The detached units with four or bedrooms require special exception per the code. And this request also necessitates a site plan amendment. and this request also necessitates a site plan amendment, which is the other case. Only changes is the approved site plan will be designating existing driveways as guest parking. 301 spaces would be required if these units would be granted a four- and five-bedroom status, and applicant is providing 345, well within the requirement. The applicant states that their request is spurred by the demand for a four-bedroom product. The Adelia development in the Oxford Farms, which is also a detached four-bedroom development, has seen significant demand, and the applicant is looking to replicate the success of the Adelia in this portion of Stillwater. Staff recommends approval of the requested special exception after making the finding that the conversion of 23 three-bedroom units into 24-bedroom and five, three, five-bedroom units will not adversely affect public interest with the condition that the approval is for the plan is submitted, and the site plan is essentially that there are no changes to the site plan outside of changing the parking, and staff recommends approval if y'all recommend approval of the special exception.
Thank you, Robert.
And here it is. We'll have to correct this as well.
All right. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Mylum, any questions?
No, no.
Anyone from the audience wish to speak? All right. So we'll vote on these individually. Case number 2908, do I have a motion on the request for the special exception?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, is it, is with the.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if they're subject to.
Well, there's one staff condition. There is a motion to approve, subject to the one staff condition, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Mr. Mylum, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. The special exception is granted. Is there a motion on case number 2909, which are the associated amendments to the site plan to go with the special exception?
Do you have a motion? I'm frozen. I'm saying, are there other staff conditions?
Oh.
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
My computer's frozen, sorry. Motion to approve subject to staff conditions, if there are any.
You can always make that. There is a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions, if there are any? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor? Commissioner Mylum, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. The site plan is approved. Our next case is case number 2910. Andy Calacut has filed a request for a special exception as provided in section 2.6.7 Traditional Neighborhood Business Dwelling Unit Density Ground Floor Residential for property located at Farmview Drive in Oxford Farms.
So as you see in the case history, this property has been before the planning commission on multiple occasions. Most recently, it was in September of last year, it was before this commission with a, or before the commission with a similar request for a special exception for ground floor residential, but that was a senior, it was going to be exclusively a senior living development, 55 or older. The applicant is now back asking for the, a similar request for ground floor residential, however, it's not solely dedicated to seniors, this particular site. And they're also proposing, instead of one-story buildings, they're proposing multi-story condos similar to what's already constructed in the Stillwater development. They're proposing a total of, let me make sure I got this right, it's four fourplex townhomes and four sixplex townhomes, consistent with the Stillwater development. Each of the building will be two, buildings will be two-story in height. The proposal previously considered having garages that people could park in, and those are now eliminated, and so it would just be surface parking that's here. All of this would still require a site plan review and approval by the city, that would have to come back before the commission at that time, but they're proposing 32 three-bedroom units and eight four-bedroom units, which does comply with the not to exceed 25% four-bedroom units in this development. Pool and a clubhouse are now proposed where it was previously a green space. The building materials are fine, they're consistent with what's already there, and this would fit in, fit in with that development. When this was originally annexed into the city and it was zoned, it was owned by the YMCA, and so it was intended for, for it to be a business use or maybe more of an institutional use to, you know, provide to the community. However, the YMCA is no longer a reality at this location, and so it does make sense, given its location surrounded by residential, for it to be a residential development. Staff recommends approval of this special exception with the two conditions stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Ben. So, as I recall, when we discussed this last September, it's in T and B, and there was both a request to have first-floor residential, but I think we discussed the fact that they were only single-story buildings and whether they needed another special exception for that, and now it's come back and they've added a story, and we're basically looking at the same special exception for ground floor residential, just for different intended audiences.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
I have just a general, like, this, this whole area down there, T and B, and I'm all for not making people put businesses where businesses are not going to survive in doing the ground floor residential, but it seems to be very, like, the point of the T and B normally is for it to be a mix, and it seems to have, we have some doctor's offices, and then we have all residential, like, maybe the zonings, I mean, you know, if that's what's going to be out there, maybe it shouldn't be T and B, or maybe we should start saying, we need some more businesses mixed in with these residences, you know?
And I think that those are things that you have to certainly evaluate as part of these requests that come before you. We certainly do, but also the T and B zoning district does provide the flexibility for you to grant something like this.
Right.
And we're seeing, we're seeing communities all across the country that are wrestling with, you know, challenges with businesses, especially with online retailers like Amazon and things like that, and it's certainly having an impact on the, you know, the amount of brick and mortar that you're going to have from a business standpoint. So I understand, you know, the comment, and I think that that's something that you, you just have to take into consideration here, and in this particular instance, it certainly is a difficult site to be able to get to from, from a business standpoint. I think it would have more challenges associated with its, you know, being viable.
Well, and I would argue that we've created those challenges. We've, we've let all of these, all of these big things happen with no businesses on the bottom, and so now, yeah, what business would want to be there?
Well, so you got a senior, you got a senior age-restricted living facility and a memory care that's approved, right next to the pediatrician, you have the women's clinic, I mean, you have several businesses that's still aligned.
But it's not a model that we, you know, the, the multi-story with.
Right. Well, the businesses.
Businesses on the bottom floor, it's a, it's a separated, you know, kind of feel.
Yeah, we're not getting, we're not getting both in each development, we're getting either or.
Right, exactly. We're getting either or every time, instead of just, yes, this one's a good idea, or that one's a good idea, but it seems like the whole thing now is either residential or commercial to me, instead of being mixed, so. It's just a comment, I mean, it's not, it's not even geared towards this one, it's just a comment.
At this particular location, I think that that might be, but that's, I do believe that the developer has plans for multi-story mixed-use buildings inside the center, that's forthcoming.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Mylum, any questions?
No, all right.
Was that a yes or a no?
I think it was no, am I right?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience wish to speak? All right. Is there a motion on case number 2910 for a special exception for T and B dwelling unit density ground floor residential?
I'd move that we grant the special exception.
There is a motion to approve the special exception, is, are there staff conditions?
With staff recommendations.
With staff conditions, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor? Commissioner Mylum, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. The special exception is granted. Our next case is case number 2912. Stuart Rutledge has filed requests for their two in this case, a variance from section 5.7.6.2 buffers, and the second one is a special exception as provided in section 2.6.5 neighborhood residential structure height maximum for property located at 1016 Molly Bar.
Sticking with the theme of cases we heard last year, there was a variance that was presented to the commission in October of last year, and it's a similar request, it was a variance from the buffer requirement, 50-foot buffer requirement adjacent to the trail. The applicant is back before you with that same request in addition to a special exception to allow a third-story building. This property is an acre, just under an acre and a half, it is narrow, it's currently vacant, it does have mature trees, and staff has met with the applicant on multiple occasions over the last, last year to discuss a new variance request for this particular property and the, the special exception, subsequently the special exception. The application did appear before the, well, in conjunction with Ian Banner, who is the university architect and facilities planner, or director of facilities planning, and then also the pathways commissioner, chairman, Don Fittell, has been a part of these conversations, and so it was a discussion of the potential to reduce the buffer in some areas. When you look at the property from north to south, the request is for a larger variance at the north end of the property, and it's reduced as you go farther to the south. The applicant does, as part of our conversations, you know, we, we did understand, he did understand, you know, I think the concerns that were previously presented to the commission, I think concerns that were, were provided over the years from developments adjacent to this, to this trail, and so I think that they have, you know, provided a thoughtful application in this particular instance. What they did differently from the previous application is they flipped the plan, so the buildings are now located on the west side of the property, where previously they were built on the, on the east side of the property closer to the, to the trail, which that allows for relief from the building, even a three-story building, it provides relief, a distance relief between the trail and the physical building. That's a comment that this, that the commission and the city has heard before, in particular as it pertains to development adjacent to the trail like Faulkner Flats. It was built right on the trail, and it's towering, and it kind of diminishes some of that sanctity of that trail and, and what's provided by the existing vegetation. In this instance, the developer is now proposing a three-story building to be able to provide for a two-car tandem garage under each of the units. There's 11 proposed units, they're all three bedrooms, and, and to the height and the massing, they did provide an exhibit that's included in your packet that helps to articulate the differences in this particular site versus the Faulkner Flats example that was discussed years ago. You also, you also see in that exhibit that there's trees, shows mature trees, but nonetheless, I think that that is speaking to vegetation that is proposed there. There's already approximately, it's approximately 50 feet of area between the edge of the pavement of the trail and the property line, and that is covered with mature vegetation as it is, some trees, some privates, some, looks like kudzu in, in some areas, but that also helps to create some sort of visual screen and buffer between, you know, the development. As required by the code, the developer will, will have to plant a, you know, a planted buffer, so I mean, it's not, it's not just separation between the uses, it also requires for it to be a planted buffer that screens, it visually screens the entirety of that buffer. Previous code, the previous code said 80%, and that's difficult to define. The way staff has discussed it with the applicant is a, a variety of types of trees that are maybe taller canopy trees, and then maybe some evergreen trees that help provide in the winter months, some middle screening, and then lower-level plantings like grasses and ornamental grasses, so it kind of helps provide that entire shield that's needed to screen this development from that trail. Also, you will see that the applicant is, is proposing several improvements to this site, at least the right-of-way of the site, where, you know, in our conversations, it was identified that this is the trailhead, so it's the beginning or the end of the, of the depot trail itself, and, and, you know, yet it lacks those identifiers like you might see at other trails at, say, Tanglefoot over in, in New Albany, or, you know, other trails around town, and so as part of that, they keyed in on the opportunity to make this an enhancement to the, to the community, and providing some of those branding elements with a, a structure, and that structure that they're, you know, that they've indicated here is very similar to what you would see at the Tanglefoot Trail. They also propose benches and bike racks. They're also proposing the potential for six parking spaces that would be constructed in the city right-of-way, of which would require a revocable license to be granted from the, the mayor and board of Aldermen, and as part of that, engineering staff would have to make sure that there's, you know, adequate site distance provided for, for safety elements also. There's a sidewalk that does connect the parking spaces over to, to the trail. I do want to be clear that enforcement of those parking spaces would be up to the city to, to maintain, so it's not to say that there wouldn't be a resident that would park in those six parking spaces, and that's something that we would have to monitor and evaluate and have to put in appropriate measures to, to ensure that the public has access to, you know, to those parking spaces. So that's something that, you know, we have, we have discussed, and we would have to further, you know, discuss as a city. You will also see at the southern end of that property, a proposal for a connection to CB Web, and so the, the developer is proposing to construct that, you know, that, that connection, so it would be some sort of a sidewalk, whether it's asphalt or concrete, I think that the developer would ultimately have to determine that, and it would connect, it would go to the western property line of this site, which is also the eastern boundary of CB Web, and it would connect directly to the trail. They also propose another connection to the trail at the midpoint of the, of the development. The, you know, there is a letter in here from Ian Banner that talks to, you know, I think it speaks to, they've been involved in this and that, they're generally supportive of, of this particular request. You know, it's a difficult site, it's very narrow, and when you put in the 50-foot buffer, it makes development on this site challenging at best, and, and then on top of that, when you, when you integrate the setback requirements, it does present its own challenges as well, you know, due to the narrowness of the site and the buffer requirements, you know, that are here, staff is recommending approval, and we have three conditions that are stated in here for the variance. The second request as part of this is a special exception for the building height, so it's a third story. We do require or regulate height in terms of floors and in feet in height, and so 38 feet is what a typical two-story building would be allowed to, to, you know, construct to, and this particular instance, they're proposing a three-story building that is pretty close to 38 feet, I believe it's 36 feet from the ground floor to the peak of the roof, and there was a concern previously with the architecture, I think the applicant is, well, the applicant is working with an architect who's put together, you know, a design package that addresses and alleviates some of staff's concerns, in particular the building orientation towards, you know, towards Molly Bar, I think he's put treatments on the north facing of that building, so that way it at least presents itself to, to the, you know, to Molly Bar as a, it's not a side of a building, I think it's beyond that, it does have a wraparound porch with several doors and a lot of windows over there, so that was certainly a concern. And staff does recommend approval of this. And staff does recommend approval of this request with three conditions. And I do want to point out condition number two and that's the approvals contingent on the developer constructing the six parking spaces, subject to the mayor and board of Alderman approval of a revocable license and engineering's review of the safety elements of that and the construction on that right-of-way. Also, the construction of the sidewalk from the parking to the trailhead. The improvements, trailhead improvements are subject to final approval by staff. That includes the benches, the bike racks, and ultimately the pergola structure with signage as discussed with staff and the sidewalk connection from CB web to the depot trail with an easement provided, to the city of Oxford, providing access to those residents. The applicant is here, the engineer, the architect, they're also here should you have any specific questions. We did receive two, we did receive two letters from the public. I believe the planning commission all received a copy of those today as well. We do have them as part of the file here. One was from Elizabeth Speed and the other was from Bill Freeman on behalf of the homeowners' association.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
So forgive me, I know you said all this, but I'm just going to repeat it quickly to make sure we're on the same page. So there are two elements that we're looking at. One is a variance from the buffer. So the property of the depot trail, it goes 50 feet from the center line of the trail on either side and that's not going to be touched. But then there is a city instantiated buffer from that property line, 50 feet into this property.
That's correct.
And so the relief is from that 50-foot buffer, particularly in the northern part of the property, so that it's buildable, correct?
That's correct.
And then the second part is a special exception for the third story and the parking will primarily be on the bottom story of the buildings. But then we're not looking at site plan yet, even though this is a, I take it an advanced concept and it'll be substantially the same at site plan, we're not quite there yet, correct?
That's right. Let's see a conceptual plan for like the landscaping that's in there that articulates, you know, our discussions that we need to have a fully screened thing. That would be something that we'd fully develop as part of that site plan review. To your question about the variance at the north end of the property, so it would be reducing the 50-foot buffer by 25 feet and then at the southern end, it dwindles down to about four feet. So there would be 46 feet of buffer in addition to the approximately 50 feet that's there.
Okay. Would the applicant come forward, please? I think there'll be some questions.
I was gonna say, real quick, Ben, how do we do the parking calculations?
Sir?
So the parking calculation, like, so this development only needs 25 spaces. How do we, how do you, how do we come up with 25? How does that calculate it?
Yeah, so two parking spaces per unit are required and then one guest parking space is required for every three units.
Even if it's three bedroom?
Correct.
That makes no sense. Okay.
Okay, so I have, while we're on that, so in this, and now I can't find it, but however many are required, you have more than that, but those, the two tandem underneath each unit are included in that because I, I think this looks beautiful, I appreciate the rework and I love that you're adding from the CB web. I've asked the city, sitting here several times to do it, I've emailed, I've loved that. But I think it's not practical to think that people, especially if these are going to be renters, maybe kids going to class or whatever, are going to actually park in tandem. This person's not going to be able to get out, this person's going to be mad, it's not gonna, you know, that to me doesn't, the tandem parking is a problem to count that in the calculation.
So there are 28 spaces currently in the development, not counting the...
Circle front, that's correct.
Right. And Ben, what's the maximum allowed for the development by code?
So you could exceed it by 25%.
So the calculated is 25, so you could go up another six and a quarter? Okay.
Do we say anything about tandem? Sorry. Do we say anything in the code about tandem? Like, because, I mean, you know, like, if you look where kids are parked all over in yards and so on, there'll just be one car in the driveway, even though you could stack two or three because there's no point in it. This person can't get out and that person's left with his girlfriend and, you know, it's, they're only going to put one in there, is my concern. And then where are the other two people that live there going to park?
Yeah, I think that that's something for the developer that has to answer, but tandem parking is, it can be proposed.
Okay.
That's right. And, you know, it's not an uncommon thing. It may be, you know, we do have some examples of it here in Oxford, but it is, you know, it's not an uncommon thing elsewhere.
Would either of you like to speak to the parking?
I'm Stuart Rutledge and I'm not one of the owners. I was asked once their first effort didn't work to see if I could help. So as you can see, this is totally different, new engineer, new architect, new everything. And I had the luxury of spending other people's money to try to make this possible. So it's a very difficult site that I've made really expensive to do through a lot of these ideas, from the trailhead amenities to the CB web connection to the extensive landscaping. But it's not, it's not possible to do everything. It's a really, really hard site. So we spent, I think we're now at about, I think we're at like month 14 and the way I treated it was that if I couldn't get everyone's support every step of the way, I wouldn't come up here. And so we would love to have a lot more space for a lot more parking. It just doesn't exist. So it's done to the, I think Ben would agree, we've done to the maximum possible within the code and we use those as our guidelines and we follow them. There's a lot more we would love to have, such is a bigger lot.
Sure.
It doesn't exist.
Would it, so just throwing this out there, but would it be possible to squeeze a parking space between the units?
There's a...
That would give you about six more parking spaces. That would be at the maximum.
You probably could between, so between the detached single units. So there's some duplexes in there. We've got, you know, those, that building space between those, between the duplexes, you know, where there's a duplex, there's a 15-foot building space in there. So yes, you could put one in there. On the, where there's single units next to each other, there's like a 10 to 12-foot difference in there, so that's going to be kind of tight. You could probably squeeze, I mean, so nine foot space.
Just put subcompact only, it'll be fine.
Exactly. It's like parking.
Yeah.
And Michael might be able to speak to that a little bit more. He's the architect, but we've had to meet that city code between 10 and 15.
Yeah.
And we looked at that, sorry, we looked at that and one of the things that we were looking at holistically about the project, and you kind of have to look at this as a whole, not just, you know, you know, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces, but one of the things that, about the aesthetics of the building is that when you have a three-story building that you're trying to make look like a two-story building, one of the things that we're trying to do is establish a base. Okay? So there's a, there's a front wall there that we, that we designed that's kind of along the front of the facade. So it's kind of establishing, what they say in France, I guess is the pein and oblay, which is the main floor, which is the, you know, the main floor. So the basement or the garage area kind of establishes that base. So when you, when you break that and you start putting parking places between the buildings, it kind of breaks that up and you lose a little bit of that. So it's kind of, you know, you could do it, but you lose some of the aesthetic that you get from the architecture. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, it's a great explanation. I mean, I do see the practical likelihood that probably people use the trailhead parking and they'll use the parking at the end, you know, rather than stack the cars in tandem whenever possible, right? And I also think we'll probably see people parking along the entrance drive, you know, even though that's not promoted or allowed, people will probably still do it and it'll be a fire hazard because you won't be able to get the fire trucks in there. That's what I'm trying to guard against.
One of the things, I mean, like my daughter, she went to school here and has moved back here actually, but she was here, graduated about five years ago. And, you know, so she would park, you know, where she worked, I mean, where she, where she lived and then she would take the out bus. And so there is a, I think there is a out bus stop right there. So to encourage, you know, mass transit, to encourage, you know, being green and all that kind of thing, you know, we are, you know, even though the tandem parking is not a, it's something that's done in larger cities a lot, you know, but it's, I think Oxford in general, you know, with being a city that wants to kind of move towards that green model, I think that would be, I think if we, if we kind of stay in the mindset of, you know, the whole Walmart thing, everybody has to have a parking lot in Walmart, you know, and we got, you know, a parking lot, I mean, six parking places for every thousand square feet in Walmart, you know, I mean, that's just as much as the footprint of the building. I think trying to go with a more walkable community is the way to go and I think that, you know, the whole car thing, I think that's, you know, trying to move away from that, you know, is a good thing, but anyway, but that's just my opinion.
It's a good point. I mean, it is on the trail, so you only have to cross one street to get onto campus from there.
Didn't the city just, or this week, aren't they putting signs up on Molly Bar, there's no parking there?
Yeah, I mean, it's a different but related issue, yeah.
And I would say that, we discussed this and the solution is, Ben's at is enforcement and the Molly Bar parking is happening with or without this. So just enforce the heck out of it, which can be done. I mean, it can be enforced, but...
Can I ask this? We have two 50-foot buffers, right? The one on the property, the city, I guess they're both city imposed, but, you know, the second one, the closest one in, could we allow some parking in that? Like some, you know, some, what do you call it, when you park beside the street?
You need to ask, you need to ask Don that question.
Yeah, I mean, that...
I think we would have serious competing interests that I think pathways would really, really not like that. I mean, our goal, kind of our mandate was...
Well, not in the pathways one, in the one just...
Well, they consider both of them very, very important to the path.
Next to that, what am I trying to say? Like if there were rearboard...
That's the buffer, I mean...
And then you come down here and you turn around and you go back out. I just, I'm very afraid and maybe city is going to do something about parking on Molly Bar, but I've noticed a lot of parking on Molly Bar and I guess it is to get on the out bus right there a lot of times, I don't know. But it's...
I think we could, you know, I'm not going to speak for them, we can talk about it, but I mean, there's...
Very bad accident waiting to happen.
Maybe parallel spots along that side or something like that.
Parallel, that's the word I was looking for.
Without having to go too far in there, but, you know, we've been fighting the buffer for years, so we didn't want to push it over any further than we had to.
What I would propose, I mean, I think these are good ideas and like I say, I have tried to treat every step of this is either get support of this as an asset, not just tolerance or don't do it. So I know, I've tried, I've also told the owners, the reason this isn't a special exception variance plus site plan is because I didn't want to ask them to spend $50,000 not knowing if it's going to work, because if this doesn't work, they're just going to quit, which they should. So what I might suggest, and this is just kind of a procedural guess, would be if you were so inclined to grant the special exception in the variance, but with a commitment or contingency that they work with planning to try to implement these before site plan approval, but what I would want to clarify, we might come back at site plan approval and say, we couldn't do any of that. Or if pathway says if you do it, we're going to burn your house down, you know, we're back where we started.
Well, is there a way to, is there a way to, say, say it was built just like this, everything's approved, it's built just like this, for us to have a condition in there that says, like we do lots of times with stacking places, if it starts flowing out into the street and whatever, you're going to have to come back and put in, you know, back your stacking up or whatever. If it's causing parking, dangerous parking on Molly Bar, then you will get the variance to go in there and put some parallel parking and it's just too bad for the buffer or whatever.
I can speak for the owners, they would want you to do that because they would love that parking.
Because I'm just concerned about the safety. I don't care if it's a pain for people to have to move their cars and whatever, I'm very concerned about the safety of it.
I like, I like that plan a lot and I know the owners would like it, which is do it and if it's a problem, just have it recorded that you're going to have to come back and ask for parking. But then we have to ask you for permission to install a parking unit.
Right, well, I mean, I think that, you know...
But absolutely.
Do you believe you have maybe one or two people or more that would like to speak?
Okay. Anybody else on the commission have a question before? All right. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm James Justice. I've been before the commission before. It's been a long time. I'm here in a different role though. Usually I'm here as an attorney representing a client and tonight I am here representing the Community Green Neighborhood Association. We are the subdivision directly across the street from the development as well as, to be quite frank, every homeowner we were able to contact and who gave me the permission to come in because we, I mean, I think we have the same concerns that Ms. Rydel and other members have discussed because what we've got is a, is, I mean, quite frankly, it's a density problem and a parking problem that's combined. What we feel is going to be exacerbated and I think someone mentioned earlier that what has been of help the last two months or so, three months or so, has been the fact that cars have been able to park in the right-of-way on Molly Bar Road. And you might say, how is that helping? Well, prior to that, our neighborhood in particular was, it was the overflow parking and we couldn't get, homeowners couldn't get in and out. We've had to call the police department out on numerous occasions, solid waste, recycling, because what you've got is overflow from Molly Bar Trails, specifically next door as well as Molly Bar Ridge up the hill. And I think the problem that you foresee is the exact problem that we're going to have is you're going to have parking where it's either going to flow into Molly Bar Cove, the street next to us, our street, Barlu Lane, up there to the extent that it's even feasible for people to park in those areas with the announcement. And I think with the announcement this afternoon from the police department that now that's going to be towing enforced along from McElroy all the way to Chickasaw, what we've done is just taken what's been a problem and it's going to be worse. I, I will tell everyone in the commission, I communicated last year with the planning department in that previous application and I think we've come light years. I like so much better, I think my neighbors will all tell you that we like so much better what we see here, but we've got this giant sort of elephant in the room of parking density with, specifically with the special exception to add, I mean, it's to add more square footage, so we've got more bedrooms, so we're going to have 33 bedrooms. And if I understand from looking at the renderings, correct, we're going to have 28 parking spaces if you include the guest parking that's included in that. So you've got simply a mathematics problem. You don't have, if one person, let's just assume that not every bedroom is occupied by someone driving a car, but if you just say that one person has a guest over, there's nowhere for them to park, there's nowhere for the vehicles to go. I think, I mean, I think the trailhead is a great idea. I think having some benches is a great idea. We've got a, I mean, it's not specific to this, but while I'm standing up here on the soapbox, I'll say, I mean, we've got a traffic flow problem and a traffic calming problem on Molly Bar. I would not, I have a about-to-be-19-year-old stepdaughter and I still don't let her go cross the street because it's too dangerous to try to cross Molly Bar to go and use the trail and I literally live across the street, much less my five-year-old, under supervision, has to be literally in my arms to cross the street. And so what this, what I see this development is, I think that this is light years from where we've been, but at the end of the day, we've got a huge logistical problem with vehicles. And while this ideal of living in a green community is great, the reality that we as homeowners and residents across the street know is exactly the opposite. Everybody's going to have a vehicle and they're going to want to put it somewhere. And what that's going to, that's going to turn into is... And what that's going to relate, that's going to turn into is vehicles either in the trailhead parking, uh, or in the absence of some other solution from the city, uh, it's going to be vehicles in the neighborhoods, on molly bar cove, on Victory Hill Lane, on Barlu Lane. And that is what up and down, I mean, I can, I'm happy to name all of my neighbors if you would like, but every single one of us without so much as even a, an abstention is we've got to figure this problem out before we put thirty-three more bedrooms across the street. Because if you look up and down molly bar, with the exception of molly bar ridge and molly bar trails, it's all single-family housing, from McElroy up in molly bar cove and Victory Hill Lane, up until you get to the enclave, that's the other, you've got molly bar ridge, molly bar trails and the enclave as the dense housing. And we've got a, we've got a vehicle and traffic problem. And I do want to applaud the, the, the developer planning, because as I, as I told Ben, I think that it's much, I mean, i- it's a much greater asset than it was before. But I would encourage the commission to at least consider tabling this, to start looking at some additional solutions before we, um, before we greenlight us moving into the site planning process. Because we've got some significant issues with that crosswalk, with that intersection, with that location. And the, quite frankly, the, the, the trail, the buffer from the trail, the, that, that's a, you know, a significant asset that I know all of my neighbors and I enjoy, to the extent we can survive crossing molly bar to get to it. Um, but in, enjoy, and I think that the, the structural, um, the height variance or the special exception for height along with that is going to, I, I do think it's going to create problems that need to be thought about now and not later down the road.
Thank you, sir. Ben, is there anything that you can share regarding the, the parking issues with the multifamily housing up there?
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, it's, it's come to our attention recently, like within the past week, that molly bar ridge, molly bar trails have changed their, um, the rental policies to, um, instead of rent by the unit, they're now rent by the bed, huh, rent, rent by the bedroom, you know? And so, um, so that's something that, um, you know, we, we just learned and we're planning to have a conversation uh, with management about those changes. And, you know, there was a, a limited amount of parking at that time that was provided. Um, you know, with the site plan for each, you know, so they have a one-to-one, uh, parking relationship. Um, that's how it was approved, so they have one parking space for every bedroom that's there. And, um, and it's not always, um, it's my, my understanding that it's not always fully parked. Not always fully parked inside of there, but I believe that there are permits, maybe even designated for specific spaces. And so if you have a guest that comes and you park in somebody else's space, then you might be towed. And so, uh, you know, we believe that what we're seeing are people that are guests that are parking on molly bar. Uh, and the, um, in the shoulder, you know, in the right of way on the other side, which is creating safety issues and concerns for, you know, for us. So, you know, we're, um, having ongoing conversations with the, um, with the management.
Okay. Any questions?
May I add one more thing in response to Mr. Justice is that, um, like Community Green, which was developed as affordable housing to begin with, CB Web has, it's, it's a lot of units, uh, which I didn't realize, which this will make every single person that lives there have instant walkability or bikeability to campus, to the city. Uh, so obviously the site's not perfect, but the net effect is hugely positive, in my opinion. And that's not thanks to me, that's thanks to me with Ben and Rob and lots of folks. So, no, it's not perfect, but you know, the, it's a small development, this is not big. And I realize that some of the large multifamily are creating problems and I would hate for a, just with all due respect, for a, a local developer doing kind of more of a boutique, this is not apartments by any means, small development, to kind of suffer, well, these apartments have really messed things up, so you don't, you shouldn't do this. And, uh, I like Ms. Rydel's idea, which is, uh, if, have a written condition that if there's a problem, y'all make us do more parking in the city-controlled buffer, which is, would be welcomed. Um, but I'd like to see it move forward personally. I think it has, I think the pros usually outweigh the cons.
Is this going to be, I'm sorry, is this going to be rental or sale?
I think the, the intent right now is to sell it. These are, these are, if you look at the renderings, that's not your student housing type development.
Well, the reason I ask it is to Judy's point about the, the parking. Um, I live at a place up north, uh, on North Lamar, and that is our parking, is back-to-back parking. I mean, we have a single-shot driveway and you park, and then mama has to get out and move the car, or daddy does, or somebody. So it, it is, it is there and it, and it's not a, a great situation. So Ben, let me ask you, if, if, if we accepted both of these, uh, the variants and the special exception, before, before anything else has, I mean, after that, or if it passes or not passes or whatever, they come back again and want something else, it would still have to go to the site plan and file a site plan and all that, that we would have to, would have the opportunity for that parking, would we not?
You'd have an opportunity to evaluate it, but if, I mean, they're currently meeting the code requirements, so I don't know that, um, y- you know, I, I don't know that you would have grounds to not approve it.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think Judy's suggestion is the best, which is we give them a signal now about how we feel about the parking situation, that we'd like them to try to find the maximum parking. But, um, I think this is the site plan we're going to see substantially when it comes.
And, and what it tells us with Judy's idea is that they better prepare, uh, meaning, you know, it's a hole right now, uh, which means they'll have to do their site plan, understanding they might have to put some parking spaces there, which means they better get the dirt ready and be prepared, and even though it'll be landscaped, uh, so, I mean, I just, I think that's a, a good idea and.
I mean, I personally would be fine, I'd be fine if y'all just came back and said, hey, we want to put parking here. We decided, I would vote for it, I'm telling you that right now.
I think at the site plan, well, to speak, I want to just be really honest, like what Ben said is if we meet the code, there's not a whole lot of grounds, so I'd, I'd, I always like to make that clear to planning commissions, I know y'all know that. But it, I think it would be feasible to come back with, I've done this in other jurisdictions where we would have a site plan where we eat up some of the buffer with some parking, so it would be a variance request and a site plan at the same time. But also a site plan without that, y'all, pathways would be mad about it, but it's y'all's choice which one you get to pick. But if we get this, I mean, we could, we could do that, couldn't we come back with two site, I've done that. So that's, I, I mean, I'll just tell you, that's what we'll do, is come back with, you'll have a site plan where we eat up more of the buffer, but it'll have to have an accompanying variant, further variance request, and you'll have one where it doesn't, and y'all pick one.
Well, to me, a landscape.
And then you're the bad guys.
Places is not the same as letting you build a three-story building.
I agree.
You know, that's, that's not the same, so.
Ben, just procedurally, how would we do that? I mean, they could do, they could put the variance on the, the agenda first, but then what, do we just not be too specific about which site plan we're looking at after that, or how would that work? Okay, so you have to roll the dice, Stuart.
Well, I think what I, no, I think, I mean, I've done this exact, I did this exact thing in Tennessee about six months ago. What I'm proposing is this plan, is that this gets approved today, but this isn't site plan approval. This doesn't mean we can do a thing. And then we come back with a site plan, and the way y'all could communicate that is two ways. One, we could come back with no more parking, y'all can just reject it, and that tells us, hey, that's not the one they want. And then we come back with the site plan with more parking, but the accompanying variance.
Yeah.
Or we just talk about it.
Yeah, I think the best thing, and Ben, hang on, let me see if they're clarifying things. To me, the best thing to do is for y'all to come up with the, the versions of the site plan between now and when it's on the agenda and work with staff for which is the best recommendation, and we'll just look at whichever one is the best recommendation.
That.
You agree with that, Ben?
I'm sorry.
I said, I think the, the best option is for them to work with staff before site plan comes to us and come up with what both sides agree is the best recommendation. And then we'll just consider whichever one y'all agree on.
That being said, um, if they're going to propose parking that's in the buffer, uh, then, you know, right now they're seeking a variance which is twenty-five feet at the north end and four feet at the south end. And they propose parking that's in the south end that eats into, uh, more into that buffer, then it would require a new variance at that time, too.
Yeah, I think, well, there's going to be at least one variance, maybe two. I mean, it depends on whether they're asking for more than twenty-five percent additional parking, and then there will be the additional buffer variance. Right.
Could we change the variance request to nine, for just doing like twenty-five feet the whole way?
Well, we can.
That way it would give us the ability to add that, without having to come back and get another buffer variance, or we're down to that four feet? That's, that's going to go ahead.
Well, I don't know, maybe.
Fine with me.
Well, I mean, I think you could if the commission.
Well, I think in that case, I'd rather just table the variance and wait until we got to the, the final version.
Respectfully, I'm not going to ask them to spend fifty thousand dollars after the prior rejection in this one. I would tell them to stop, not, no offense to y'all, but because it was not easy to get to here with the, uh, the buffer folks. Uh, it was extremely challenging and, uh, so now we're into the parking situation and they're both, so I want them to do a site plan. Yeah, I mean, if, how many spaces could you get with twenty-five feet?
I mean, you could run them all the way up to down, east side, as many as y'all want.
If y'all want that, they can commit to it right now. I mean, this isn't a site plan, so this is, it can, it can say.
My, my question is, do the buffer people not just have to do with that first fifty feet? They also have to do with this fifty feet?
Pathways doesn't have any official authority, but it was, the idea was, they were the, you know, most vocal against the prior ones. So the idea was to satisfy them and we got there.
But I would think their fifty feet would be that first fifty feet.
Well, they care about all, every feet, every feet.
So.
Fifty feet from our property line, so you've already got the buffer that's the actual trail owns.
Right.
And you've got our property and that's it.
That's the fifty feet.
They do care about it.
I got it.
All right, so we have, as usual, a few options here.
Can, can I just say, I think as far as residents are concerned, I think that I understand there's competing interest here. Trailhead, the, the, the pathways commission wants more buffer. We as residents, we want, we, we want both, I mean, it'd be great to have buffer and parking. And I mean, I think that's, that's the solution that I'm trying to encourage us to work toward here. It's why I encourage this, that's why I made the recommendation to table it, is because I think we can balance those things out. I mean, I think we could eat into some of that buffer where it doesn't create, you know, pathways folks just losing their mind about, we're losing this, you know, this many feet. Because we do have a more limited buffer on the far end, I mean, I've, I've looked at it. But what that buffer provides for those of us who actually live across the street, eating into that buffer is that there's not cars parked in front of my house where I can't have a guest at my house, where my kids can't go down and cross the street. I mean, that's, that's the trade-off here, which is why, I mean, I do think spending a little time trying to balance that out is, is helpful. I mean, I think it's helpful for us as the next-door neighbors of the future development. And it's not, I know time is money and I would want to move, I want to be able to move to the next step. I just think we can, and, and I'm happy to work, um, with any of the development team, because I want, I want my neighbors to go, hey, we like this, because we do, I mean, I think we're lighter than where we started.
Sure.
On this.
So the landscaping buffer is within the fifty, the fifty-foot buffer, right? It's along the property line. So, yeah, at the south end, we could potentially put some that are behind the landscape buffer, wouldn't interfere with the landscape buffer and add some additional parking.
It still wouldn't be four feet?
It still wouldn't be four feet, um, I grant.
The, the, the variance requested at the north end up along molly bar is twenty-five feet of the fifty, which is good, because you're up against the road, that doesn't matter as much. It, we, on purpose, to satisfy, with all due respect to Mr. Justice, a whole other group of neighbors, we tried to reduce it from twenty-five down to four.
Yeah.
What Joey is saying is just go twenty-five the whole way, and then we, and then, I mean, this would be kind of what Judy's saying is go twenty-five the whole way and then work with planning to install the maximum amount of parking spaces within that buffer. And they would love to do that, they would want to do that. And if y'all forced them to do that, that would be even better.
Just to complicate it, where are we on, um, block coverage?
We've, we've got fifty-foot buffers and we got.
Okay, so that does all that.
Twenty-five would be great, twenty-five with maximum parking, the planning.
We, we really need to do parallel spots, I mean, if we, I, I just said twenty-five.
Yes.
You have to use like a twenty-five.
And I think if they get more than that, they don't necessarily do parallel spots, which allows you to get more parking into that, too, right? If you put in eighteen, it's eighteen feet, right?
That's right, we would, I, we, I don't think we would want to do that to try to satisfy you guys and pathways at the same time, so I mean.
Yeah.
You could get, you know, it's a long stretch down there, but with the parallel spots, you're going to spot every one piece.
Well, and you can turn around in the guest parking, too, so.
And that's where, JR, your suggestion that we work with planning before we come back with a site plan. But if we have the twenty-five-foot variance and we are at the condition to work with planning to maximize parking in that space, that's the site plan we'll come back with. And I would tell them to go spend the money to do that, because it's clear cut, it's maximize your parking.
Ben, any comments from planning? Any other considerations? Would anyone like to craft a motion? Trying to include what she was talking about. Judy, I would like to invite a motion on this case. Um, we're, we're doing separate votes, so on the variance from buffers, is there a motion?
Well, but would that need to change since they?
You can either, I, I think we're within our authority to either vote up or down on the variance as presented or to modify it and, you know, give the twenty-five-foot variance all the way down. True or false, counsel? No, just hold it.
Okay, well, I would make a motion then that we grant a variance request with the modification of the twenty-five feet all the way down the length of the property.
Okay.
The east, of the east side of the property.
All right, subject to other staff conditions?
Subject to other staff conditions, yes.
All right, there is a motion to grant a twenty-five-foot variance from the buffer for the length.
Wait, wait, I would add to that with, for the purpose of maximizing your, your parking.
Okay, no accessory structures.
Right.
Right.
Um, the, the, the motion is for a variance for twenty-five, a twenty-five-foot variance from the buffer for the length of the property, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor? Commissioner Mylum, how do you vote?
Uh, I vote yes, as long as that included the parking, the limitation that the twenty-five-foot variance be used solely for additional parking only.
Yes.
Which I need to hear you say, JR.
That was, the motion is stated. Thanks for clarifying, yes. All right, uh, so the variance is approved, and now, was that Ben? Okay, uh, and now is there a motion on the special exception for the structure height?
I would move to approve it, um, with staff conditions.
Motion to approve the structure height, special exception, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second? There is a second, all in favor? Commissioner Mylum, how do you, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Special exen- exception is approved. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Our next case is public hearing for case number twenty-nine thirteen. Rick Hollander has filed a request for a special exception as provided in section three point eight point twelve, small craft brewery districts permitted for. Small Craft Brewery District permitted for property located at 100 Depot Street. We've seen this before.
Keeping with the theme of things we heard last year. And there is an update, there is an update in your staff report from earlier today. I guess it was on Friday of last week. Staff did receive an updated parking plan and floor plans. They're included in the packet right now. Parking plan now indicates a total of three parking spaces that would be provided on the south end of Depot. And as a result, there will not be a need for a site plan review. I'll get into the specifics of that in a minute, but this property is located at Depot Drive. It's, has frontage to Jackson Avenue. It's across the street from the Courtyard Marriott. It's about half an acre, has a vacant building on it, the Better Brands, the former Better Brands building, and the applicant is proposing to work with the existing building as it is right now. The previously approved site plan is, or special exceptions, that development is no longer moving forward. And so, in this particular instance, the, the developer of this particular property is proposing three leasable office spaces inside of the building, and then an approximately 3,500-square-foot space that will be leased to Mr. Hollander for a, the purposes of brewery, which is the subject of this particular request, for a special exception. Our first small craft brewery that has been sought, and the first of our recently-approved ordinance from earlier this year. Application notes that Circle and Square Brewing will operate. It's a seven-barrel system, so relatively speaking, it's a smaller brewery. And because this is a, I think, a microbrewery as it's proposed, they are required to distribute 20% of their products. So 80%, up to 80% may be sold on-site, but a minimum of 20% would have to be distributed. Nonetheless, a seven-barrel system is pretty small, and I think they even note in the application, about 600 barrels per year could be, could be brewed. The location, as we all know, it borders the University Depot and the Depot Trail and the Ford Center, which has a large parking lot. And the applicant believes that this is the perfect location for this particular use, and the nearest residents are about half a mile away, and so they believe that it would result in minimal disruption to the residential areas. Parking for a brewery is based on seats of, provided within the facility. And so that's one space for four customer seats, plus a parking spot for each employee. It's working during the largest shift. The applicant is proposing a total of 18 parking spaces. 15 is based on seating, three for the employee space. And the, so getting back to the modifications to what was previously proposed, they were proposing, I think, a total of seven parking spaces to be constructed, I think, on the east side of Depot Street. They're proposing three right now, which satisfies the requirement for this particular request. Any other businesses that are proposed in units one, two, and three of this particular building will have to be, there will have to be some sort of a parking plan that's provided, whether that's through the additional, the addition of parking spaces on that east side, or through some sort of a parking arrangement, maybe through the university, whatever the case may be. We have not received an easement or parking agreement with the university, but they do, they do note that unless there's, you know, a special event or some sort of a scheduled event, or a, you know, a game day weekend, then there's usually the ability to park in those parking spaces. Additional standards are required for this particular use, and I've listed them in the report with the applicant's response and how that they intend to satisfy those requirements, or how they intend to comply with those requirements. Staff does recommend approval of this special exception with the five noted conditions in your report, or, you know, conditions in this report. I do want to make one slight modification to condition number three, and that's to provide a little bit of flexibility with, the landscaping bed shall be installed. And to, instead of it being at the southern portion of the new parking area, it would be to be approved by staff, planning staff, for a, you know, landscaping bed somewhere within that area. So we might look to put it in the middle and have parking in both sides of it. But nonetheless, I would like a little bit of flexibility to work with the applicant on where that would be located. Otherwise, the applicant is here, Rick is right there, and if you have any specific questions for him, I'm sure he'd love to talk to you.
Thank you, Ben. Forgive me if I missed this, but when we heard this previously, wasn't there an issue with university ownership of part of the property? Is that still an issue, or has that been resolved?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question, yes. That issue is in the process of being resolved. It's my understanding, and I had a conversation today, that this is on the, that transaction of that property, where the owner of that property will, will be buying it. That's on the IHL agenda for this month.
Okay, great. On the 17th. Thanks, sir. Other questions?
Can we make this contingent on that going, I mean, IHL might say no.
We can't do it if they say no.
Okay. My other, unfortunately, is still parking. My other question is still parking. I, you know, it's, it said, based on how many staff you would have that you're fully staffed, and I think it said three. You've got 50-something seats, plus an active brewery working. That's, surely there're gonna be more than three people work, I mean, I don't, you know...
No, it's fair. Rick Hollander, thanks for having me. So the way it'll work is brewing operations will be typically nine to five, if even that. So to brew a batch of beer doesn't take very long, and we have one brewmaster that'll actually do all the brewing. At night, it's more of a self-serve kind of model. I don't know if you've been to the Growler, Thin Growler, you go and you get the beer right there. So two bart, two beer tenders, if you will, tops, they're in capacity. And then one person in the kitchen. Again, it's gonna be that self-serve we're looking at. It'll probably be a text type, right, where you get a phone number and your order's ready, come up to a window and get it. So the food prep side would just be one person. Minimal food, simple food, it's assembly, it's not anything real fancy, right? It's a brewery, not a restaurant, it's a brewery. So we think three is pretty adequate during that, during that time period to do what you have to do. The business model has three. That peaks, so it kind of falls apart otherwise. Doesn't fall apart, but it's complicated.
While you're thinking, I guess, I'm just curious, since we're asking about parking, but the, didn't the last group, were y'all the same group that came before with the two young guys? Because they had like...
We partnered.
Okay, wasn't there like an agreement about...
Oh, it's different. Sorry.
About the parking with the, with the school? Was there some kind of...
A shared parking agreement?
All shared, yeah, was that? I could be mixing this up with another one, but I thought...
Sumner Abraham, my group formerly owned Depot Street. We do not own it anymore. And so this, the brewery would be leasing the space from them. So the shared parking agreement was between our entity and the university. And the current owners of the building don't have that parking agreement. The university's indicated that they would be amenable to using the same parking agreement, but that's not currently in place.
Okay. That's it, that's what I got.
Any other questions? Commissioner Mylum, any questions?
No questions for me.
Did you bring any samples? Anyone from the audience wish to speak? All right, I will entertain a motion on case number 2913 for the special exception for the small craft brewery use at 100 Depot Street.
Motion to approve, subject to the staff conditions as listed.
With the amendment to...
With the amendment to the landscaping, that it doesn't have to be specifically in the southern portion.
All right, I have a motion to approve, subject to the amended staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor, since Commissioner Mylum seconded it, that'll be a yes. Yeah. All right, the special exception is granted. Congratulations.
I really appreciate you holding that job.
And I think the neighbors should have been very excited.
What's that?
Did you bring the samples?
Yeah. Oh, well. Case number 2914, Ramiro Munoz has filed requests for a special exception as provided in section 3.11.9, unenclosed rooftop, and a special exception as provided in section 2.6.8, suburban corridor, front build-to-line maximum for property located at Highway 6 West, near Park West.
Okay, so the proposed new building will be located on 1.7 acres along Highway 6. Will serve as a restaurant. It's to the left of the Crystal, if that helps anyone. Zone, suburban corridor. The site currently has a concrete slab and utilities. The new 8,850-square-foot commercial building will front Highway 6. There's an existing stormwater tension on-site that currently serves this property, and the site plan is currently under review. So as JR mentioned, they're seeking two special exceptions. So we'll go through the unenclosed rooftop first, and then the front build-to-line. So for the special exception as provided in section 3.11.9 for unenclosed rooftop, the proposed commercial use of unenclosed rooftop area requires approval by special exception. The applicable standards for this relate primarily to safety concerns and include standards for barriers, the use of non-breakable serving items for food and drink, and ban on any exterior food or drink preparation area, seating requirements, and building code requirements. The proposed unenclosed rooftop at this location will be used for dining, and the plans do show a six-foot-wide planter that will provide the necessary physical barrier so that patrons can't get within six feet of the edge of the rooftop. Staff recommends approval of the proposed special exception after making the finding that the use of an unenclosed rooftop will not adversely affect the public interest with the requirement that the applicant acknowledges adherence to the following standards from the Land Development Code regarding, one, non-breakable materials, two, distribution, and three, seating requirements. For item B, the special exception as provided in section 2.6.8 for the front build-to-line maximum. The applicant seeks approval to exceed the maximum front build, front yard build-to-line for this property by about 20 feet. The maximum for the property is 58 feet, as specified for the suburban corridor zoning. As the applicant noted in their application, the existing buildings to the east and west of the proposed building both exceed that 58-foot build-to-line, and this request would be in harmony with the surrounding commercial areas, reflects the current building patterns for commercial properties in this area of Highway 6. So staff is recommending approval after making the finding that the requested special exception will not adversely affect the public interest.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission for either of the cases?
I'm guessing that on page four of the packet that you sent me, with the six-foot border in green, the darker purple is covered and you walk outside, correct?
I believe so. Let me check. Sorry, that's on page four of the plans, isn't it? Yeah, the...
So what I'm seeing is six tables outside.
Is that right? Yeah. Michael Gray Jones is the architect for that.
Okay.
So it's not a huge area.
Any other questions? Commissioner Mylum, any questions?
No, no questions for me.
Anybody from the audience wish to speak? Hollis, okay. Hearing none? It was bound to happen.
Get a little punchy up there.
We're two hours and 40 minutes in. Is there a motion on the special exception for the unenclosed rooftop?
So moved. With, with...
To approve?
To approve.
Okay. There is a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor. Commissioner Mylum, how do you vote on the special exception for the unenclosed rooftop?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion on the special exception for the front build-to-line? I have a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor. Commissioner Mylum, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, it is granted. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second, all in favor. Commissioner Mylum, have a good night.
All right. Yep, thank you, guys.